This special meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:32 PM on August 20, 2015. The subject of this meeting is the discussion and consideration and action taken upon items that are listed that we have had previous information regarding, and we will take those in order. However, for the record, we do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the school district. All board members are here with the exception of Ms. Klein, who is in traffic and hopefully will be here shortly. However, we will go ahead and proceed to Agenda Item 2A, Consider Approval of the 2014-2015 Final Budget Amendment for the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Members of the board, as you know, it's our regular process to kind of finalize all the work you've been doing for the past almost six months or longer, and this is the kind of the formal way to bring all that to closure and then move on and have an official budget for 2015-16. But there are a few things we've got to do first. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hyde, or you want to go straight to the expert?
It's Mr. Hyde.
Okay. All right. Ms. Tillman, you're up.
Thank you. In the folder in front of you, each of you have a copy of the final 2014-15 budget amendment. It's the very first item in your folder. And each year in August, we project out what our expected expenditures will be, and then we build in some contingencies at each functional level so that when we perform year-end adjustments or journal entries and accruals, we don't want to go over in any one particular function, so we build in a contingency to avoid any future potential compliance issue with the auditors. If you look at page one of this budget amendment, you'll see at the bottom that this is an $11.3 million deficit. We know we're not going to realize this deficit. We have a lot of contingency built in here. We'll be well below this based upon where our expenditure is at or at as of last week. If you look at the next page, our debt service and food service funds, those are both proposed balanced budgets for the 2014-15 year. Based upon our current activities in these funds, we expect to actually put funds into those, both of those fund balances this year. And we ask that you approve the final budget amendment as presented.
Board members, do you have any questions regarding the budget amendment for the 2014-2015 year? Mr. Shore.
Yes, I do, President Goode. Thank you. Ms. Tillman, let's assume that worst-case scenario, so that we do have an $11.3 million deficit that is actually achieved. And achieved is probably the wrong term, but...
Realized.
Realized. Thank you. Realized, okay. What would that leave in our fund balance?
That would leave, let me go to another slide.
Please. Not on this.
$67 million, which would be about 114 days.
How did you know that was going to be my next question? And my final question to series is, and what do experts recommend for the period of time that's covered by the fund balance? Is it not 60 to 90 days?
Yes.
That's a yes, isn't it?
For some experts.
Okay. Okay. For most experts, we can agree 90 days, correct?
Yes.
And can we agree that 114 is higher than 90?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Board members, other questions?
Mr. Goode?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Tillman, and thank you for all the hard work that all of the accounting staff has done on this. You say that, you know, obviously you've built in lots of contingencies, just in case people are watching this online or doing whatever. Can you give us kind of a ballpark that says, in prior years, using your conservative strategy, approximately how has that worked out? Because, you know, in other words, if you had a roughly $10 million budget overrun built in with your contingency, and then it ended up only being $500,000 or something like that, can you kind of give us a ballpark? So Mr. Shore asked, if it was worst-case scenario, we had to do all of this, what if it's best-case scenario? What do we think it might be?
Right now, based upon what has been encumbered, we believe we'll be at $4 million or less deficit.
Okay.
There's a lot of moving parts that happen in August, and so last week, for example, when we looked, we had over $5 million encumbered, meaning we don't know if that's going to come in by August 31st or not.
Right.
So we don't know what year to put that in. It's a pretty large number to not know what's going to happen with. We had another $3 million unexpended, but people could still issue purchase orders. So we have, you know, a pretty big swing right there that we don't know if it's actually going to happen by August 31st or not. But based upon prior year history and where we're at right now, we feel confident it won't be a deficit higher than $4 million and could likely be lower.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Board members, this is an action item. Mr. Shore.
I move that we approve the final budget amendment for 2014-2015.
I have a motion, Ms. Watten, and a second by Ms. Watten. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 2B, Consider Adopting a Resolution to Classify A Portion of Fund Balances Per the Governmental Accounting Standards, Board Standard 54, known as GASBY 54. Dr. Burns?
Mr. Goode, we're just going to let Ms. Tillman keep the show going here.
So part of our yearly financial reporting practices involves evaluating our fund balance and making suggestions for commitments. And when we commit fund balance, we're basically moving it out of unassigned category up into other categories. And in order to commit a fund balance, you actually have to have the board approve a resolution defining what categories you want to commit. When we make those commitments, we would still come back with you, to you at a later date for general fund commitments with a budget amendment if we actually wanted to spend those funds. It's really for reporting purposes, and again, it's just literally moving the funds out of unassigned up into a category. This will be the fifth year in a row that we've done this, and this year, the commitments that we would like to make include building, construction, repair, and renovation, technology capital replacement, and campus activity funds. So the first two commitments are general fund commitments. We've had these in the past. And then the third one is campus activity funds, which is actually a special revenue fund. So that would be the only one that wouldn't come back to the board because those funds are already earmarked for the campuses and roll forward from year to year anyway. So those don't require board action, but the first two would. All three require board action to actually commit the funds, and we're asking that you approve the resolution to create these commitments.
Board members, questions?
So in other words, the campus activities, they've already been adjusted over the budget.
Yes, those are divided out among the campuses. It's revenue that they've brought in and haven't spent yet, and we will roll it forward to the next year so it's still available for them.
Got it.
Any other questions? Mr. Shore.
But aren't you, except for the campus activity fund and one other, aren't you really asking us to put a label on portions of this money, but before it's actually spent, it has to come back to us?
Yes.
And putting the label on it doesn't preclude us from changing the label at some other date in time?
That's correct.
And more the purposes of Goode has on...
Just to guard it from the state.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Now, interestingly enough, it was a guy at TEA that first recommended and proposed it, this guy named Tom Camby, a little several years ago, and it coincided with GASBY 54 being brought into existence. But there are people that are smart enough to realize that even though we have some money in the bank, there may be some commitments that the board has in mind for it, and we just need a way to illustrate that so that when you look at our fund balance, it's not totally available to us. There are things that might be considered as commitments in the future.
Board members, other questions? Point of clarification. Is it required that this be read into the record or just approved?
No, you can refer to the items in the publicly posted agenda.
Very good. Want to make sure. Because normally, we do not read it into the record, but...
That's right.
Board members, this is, Mr. Shore.
Well, with guidance from you, Mr. Goode, I'll move that we adopt a resolution to classify a portion of fund balances per the Governmental Accounting Standards, Board Standard 54.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second by Mr. Shackman. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by raising their hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We will now move on to Agenda Item 2C, which is Public Meeting to Discuss the 2015-2016 Budget and Proposed Tax Rate. If I may, as established in Texas Education Code Sections 44.002 through 44.006, the process to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for Texas public school districts includes a lawfully posted public hearing during which our constituents may participate. At this time, we will reassess our special meeting and open a public hearing portion of our agenda to discuss this. And the time is 6:43. Dr. Burns, I believe that you and Mr. Hyde would like to begin with some words and a short presentation before we open the floor to, for comments and questions from the audience. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Goode, members of the board, we'll go right to the presentation piece of that, so...
I just, yeah, I promised Tanya I wouldn't say a whole lot, because usually I introduce the topic and say all the really fun, good stuff, and then turn it over to her to do the boring stuff. But what I will say is, in a time when finances are just as difficult as they've been in pretty much the entire time I've been doing this job, Ms. Tillman seems to make it easier. I don't know why. She just seems to have more answers and more ability to get answers than we've had in the past in a very unsure environment. So I want to, I guess I want to let the board know, and I think you've been in enough training and enough exposure to the state to do realize, state doesn't make this easy. It's almost like it's a game that you don't get the real answers till late in the process, and you've got to make a lot of guesses. Again, Ms. Tillman makes a lot of guesses that tend to come out more often right, and I just wanted to reinforce and reassure you of her abilities in doing this, because this is as well-put-together budget as we've had since I've been here. So, Tanya?
Thank you. So the board has to approve a budget for three funds. That includes the general fund, the debt service fund, and the food service fund. We're going to take a minute and talk about each one of these funds, starting with the general fund. We have better news to report for you on the 2015-16 proposed budget than what we had in May. If you recall, in May, the session was still going on, and the House and the Senate were pretty well locked in on what they wanted to do, and they weren't compromising. So we had to try to estimate what was going to happen. And we'll talk more about how that impacted us. But for now, for 2015-16, our proposed budget now is a $6.9 million deficit. If you recall, in May, we were at $10,850,000. So although this isn't good news, because we still have a deficit, it is better news as compared to where we were at in May. In looking at the components of our budget, you can see in the general fund, the largest portion of our revenue, $172 million, or 74% of our general fund, comes from local funds, which is largely property taxes. If you look at our expenditures, again, the biggest portion goes to payroll at $177.6 million, or 74% of our general fund budget. Keep in mind that our TIF payment now is just under 10% of our general fund budget. So if you were to back that out and actually look at how much of our operating expenditures go to payroll, it would be 83%. In looking at the big changes in our revenues and expenditures, we're going to start off looking at our state revenue. House Bill 1 passed, and the final result of that was that they basically increased the basic allotment. What that did for us, it increased our funding by just over $5 million. The numbers we had been using reflected $3 million, so it came in slightly higher than what we had anticipated. Also within our state funding is Senate Bill 1, and this was the homestead exemption increase from $15,000 to $25,000. For the maintenance and operations side, we lost $2.7 million in taxes. The indication is, is that the state's going to hold us harmless for this $2.7 million. We still haven't received anything from TEA showing how they're going to make that calculation, so this is basically an estimate on our part right now. The third piece of our state funding is an $8.8 million reduction, and this is a result of the increase in our property values in the prior year. We're back on formula now, so when our values change, there's a one-year lag in our Tier 1 funding that's impacted by the prior year increase. So although we got $5.1 million more in formula funding, we lost $8 million from the state impact of our prior year property growth. So if you net all these together, we're actually down almost $1 million in state funding. TRS on behalf, this is really just an entry we do on both the revenue and expenditure side, where we recognize how much the state is putting in for our employees, and so it's an estimate. So if we increase our revenues by $1.1 million, there's also an offsetting increase in expenditures of $1.1 million. This is from budget to budget, so our 2015 budget was low from a rate change, so in comparing actual 2015 to 2016, it won't be this big of an increase. Our local funds, our property tax values went up. From our original budget, we're budgeting $9 million more in property taxes. In looking at our certified values, we actually had a 6.24% increase when using the certified value that included the $25,000 homestead exemption. If Senate Bill 1 hadn't have passed and we were still at the $15,000, our values actually would have gone up 7.82%. I didn't budget the full 6.24% because we still have to go in and make an adjustment for all of our frozen property values, and we have to give them an additional benefit from the increase in the homestead exemption. So we're going to lose some more tax revenues there, so we lowered our estimate slightly. The caution here again is that because we had this big increase of $9 million this year, we'll have another drop next year in our state funding. So our taxes will have to go up again to offset that. When we look at our expenditures, starting with department and campuses, at the campus level, we basically provided the same funding that we provided in 2015 on a per-student basis. Their non-payroll in total for all campuses is about $2.2 million in our budget, and that's discretionary funds that the campuses have to use for supplies and materials on their campus. Departments, we also budgeted the same amount that they received in 2015. And then finally, we had a process where departments and campuses can request additional funds when they feel like their basic allotment doesn't cover their needs. This year, we had just under $500,000 in requests, and we approved $262,000 of additional funds that will go out to the campuses. Our biggest adjustment in operations is $3.9 million in payroll. The board did approve that raise in May. That was a 3% general pay increase. We had another $1.7 million increase on our expenditure side. $1.2 of that is the offset of the TRS on behalf increase you saw on the revenue side. The rest of that is we made some small adjustments to some stipends, and we also adjusted our substitute pay system and increased one of our rates there. We made minimal staffing adjustments this year. Largely at secondary, we added some teaching units, and also in our special education units, we added. But we'll mostly be flat there, which means we'll expect some waivers again in September and October. Other significant changes in expenditures? We did budget $4.5 million less in technology improvements than we did in 2015. We had a $7.5 million in the original 2015 budget for technology improvements. We lowered that to $3 million for 2016. And finally, our TIF payment, which also is a year behind, we make our TIF payment on the prior year values. So this increase is from the prior year, and it's going up $4.4 million. That means we had the benefit of the tax increase in the prior year, so they don't match up either. When you look in total here, looking at the beginning budget to beginning budget from 2015 to 2016, you can see here, our revenue's going up 10 million or 4.5%. You can see our taxes of $9 million, and our loss in state funding of almost $1 million. On our, I'm sorry, expenditure side, down at the very bottom, you can see a lot of activity between functions here. However, in total, our expenditures went up just over $6.3 million, or 2.74%. However, a big majority of that is our TIF increase of $4.4 million. If you back the TIF out, we're at $1.9 million, and then if you back TRS out, you're at $700,000. So our expenditures are basically flat from 2015 to 2016, although we did provide a raise, which was largely offset with a reduction in our technology investment. So looking at our fund balance, utilizing these estimates, right now, we were at $142 at the end of the prior fiscal year. If we assume a $4 million deficit in 2015, the year we're going to end, we would be at $128. If we went forward and assumed the $6 million for 2015-16, we would be at 114 days. Again, here, our concern is the trend, and we know we can't maintain this trend. And if you recall from the market data we looked at in the surrounding districts, the average fund balance was around 147 days, so we're starting to fall below a little bit in the, what the area school districts are maintaining. We're going to switch to debt service now. And basically, our debt service fund reflects our commitments to bonds and the payments for that year, and so we establish a tax rate that will cover those bond service payments. Our payments went down for 2016 by about half a million dollars. That's a 1.3% drop from the prior year in our debt service fund. Just as a comment with Senate Bill 1, we're also losing debt service funds of approximately $700,000. Again, the state is supposed to hold us whole and give those funds to us for the loss in tax revenue. We haven't seen how that's going to happen yet. We set the tax rate accordingly, assuming that we'll receive those funds from the state. In the event that the state does not send us those funds, we do have adequate reserves in the debt service fund to cover that $700,000. The food service fund. This fund is intended to be a self-sustaining fund, and they've done a great job in keeping their expenditures in line with their revenues. For 2016, they are expecting an increase in their expenditures, both from payroll and food and supply costs. They are currently projecting they'll be able to offset that with revenue, and this year, they've done really well and expect to put monies back into fund balance. Going on to our tax rate that we're proposing, for 2016, we are proposing we maintain our maintenance and operation tax rate at $1.4, and we're proposing we change our interest and sinking fund tax rate from $2633 to $2417, just over a 2 cent decrease. So we would go from $1333 to $12817. The rollback rate is $1292807, and that's the rate that would cause the voters to have to approve the tax rate we're adopting. Since we're below that rate, the voters aren't required to approve this rate. This slide shows the history of our tax rate, and you can see here, we're proposing $12817, which will be our fourth year in a row that we've dropped our rate, and going all the way back to 1992, or 24 years, this is the lowest rate we've proposed. Taking a look at various taxable values and properties over the years, we just wanted to show you an illustration of a house valued at a constant amount, so $100,000, for example, the taxes they would have paid in 1213 going forward, all the way up to 2016. So if a value of a home was $100,000, they would have paid $1463 in 1213. Now it would be $1281. We know that our values have gone up over this time period. This is just to reflect a house of the same value from these periods of time. From 2014 to 2015, our average taxable homeowner value did go from $167,386 to $174,780, which is about a 4.42% increase. If you actually apply our tax rates to this average values for the two years, you can see the taxes will go up $58.61 using these average values. I do want to remind you, when we looked at the market data for our area for the prior year tax rates, we were well below the average for our area. We looked at 12 other districts in the area. The average was about $143, with some as high as $164 to $167. Not all of them have released what they're doing in 2016, but I suspect will still be on the low end of the market in our area. Also, just for your information in your folders, on the very last page, I did include the current list of who all is calling a 2015 tax ratification election thus far. Either they've indicated they're going to, or they've already set the date. So that's just for your information. It's the last page in your binders. One piece of the truth and taxation requirements require that we calculate what's called an effective tax rate. The effective tax rate is a calculated tax rate that would produce the same amount of revenue if you applied that rate to the same property in both years that we're talking about. So our effective tax rate is $1224598, so we are proposing a rate that's higher than our total effective tax rate. So even though we are lowering our tax rate, we have to calculate this effective rate, and then we have to use this specific language that's in tax law to adopt the rate. And so I've included this just for your information as a reminder, and there's also a page in your folder that gives a sample. When we get to this item, you'll have sample language that we're required to use if we do adopt this rate. Also, within our ordinance, we're required to include specific information related to our maintenance and operation rate. So we have to include in the ordinance that this rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's tax rate. We're actually below our effective maintenance and operation rate, which is a different calculation, so we do not have to include the second piece in our ordinance that we've had to include in the past. So this evening, we had three objectives. The first one is to hold a public meeting, and then to consider adopting the 2015-16 budget, and then to consider adopting the 2015-16 tax rate. We wanted to thank everybody for their interest, and I also wanted to thank our staff that's here this evening. Anna Brady, who's our tax collector, who's going to have the pleasure of recalculating all the frozen values and applying an additional credit for homestead exemption for our taxpayers. And Scott Roderick, of course, he pulls all this data together and starts working in January to make the budget come together, and so we appreciate their work.
Very good. Let me restate, we are still in a public hearing. Therefore, at this time, the board would entertain any questions or comments regarding the proposed budget and tax rate from the floor. If you would like, if anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding these matters, if you would go to the podium, announce your name and address in the microphone so that we may acknowledge you and hear everything you wish to state. Is there anyone who would like to speak in this public hearing? Hearing none? We will therefore close this public hearing portion of our meeting and reconvene back in our other meeting at 7:01 PM. Our next agenda item is Agenda Item 2D, which is Consider All Matters Related to the 2015-2016 Budget, Including Execution of a Resolution Adopting and Approving the Said Budget. Board members, questions, comments at this time regarding the budget?
There's none.
None? If there are no questions or comments... If there are no questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve?
Sure.
Mr. Shore.
I move that we adopt a resolution related to the 2015-16 budget, adopting and approving said budget.
I have a motion by Mr. Shore.
Second.
Mr. Matthews, a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. We will move on to...
Do I?
Okay.
Yeah. It was just quick, but...
Do you have a question? We can still entertain it.
No, no, I was turning the page and...
Oh, okay.
We were counting before I could raise my hand.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2E, Consider All Matters Related to the Proposed Tax Rate for the Tax Year 2015, Including a Resolution Setting the Said Tax Rate. Board members, any questions, comments? Mr. Shore.
Ms. Tillman, when I review the resolution that the administration wants us to approve today, I see where it includes language that by doing this, there'd be an effective increase in the tax rate of 4.66%. Now, I'm going to round that 4.66% to 5% just to make it a little easier to talk about, okay? And I see you nodding your head, so I believe you're understanding what I'm saying right now.
Yes.
Aren't there a number of parts that go into this calculation?
Yes, sir.
And the parts include the value of the real estate and the tax rate?
Yes.
Okay. And if the property values have increased, but the tax rate hasn't, by having increased property values, the money that's raised with the same tax rate as previously when the property values were lower is going to be more money?
Yes.
And the state requires us to tell the world, if you are raising, if the property values stayed the same, but you're raising more money because the property values have increased, then we have to tell the world what the tax rate would have to be to generate this higher amount of money.
That's correct.
And so, this is really a mathematical statement that in fact does not stand for the proposition that this board is raising the taxes of our residents. In fact, aren't we decreasing them?
Yes, sir.
But because the property values are higher, it looks, mathematically, it could look like an approximately 5% increase.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Good, let me...
Yes, sir.
Let me ask a devil's advocate question. If we didn't make the reduction, would that help us on our budget deficit?
No, because we're adjusting the INS side.
Right.
And that can only be used for debt service.
Okay. But we want our constituents to hear that.
Nice try.
Nice try.
And just, part of the reason is the increase, but we've also performed five refundings over, since 2010, and have lowered the overall debt service by over $21 million for our taxpayers. So that's helped as well to be able to make these adjustments.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? If not, well, do I have them? Mr. Shore.
Well, it seems like I'm batting 100 so far, so I'll see if I can keep the streak going. I move that this board approve the resolution setting the tax rate for tax year 2015 as found in Item 2E of the board book, and I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.04 for the purpose of maintenance and operation, and .2417 for the purpose of payment of principal and interest on debts, for a total tax rate of $1.2817, I hate this, which is effectively a 4.66% increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion by Mr. Shore. Do I have a second? Ms. Watt?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We will move on to Agenda Item 2F, which is Consider Designation of Voting Delegate and Alternate Delegate to the TASB General Conference. Mr. Fleming?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. John Matthews.
I'll second that.
I have any discussion? Hearing none? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Does he get to say anything?
No.
He could have, but he delayed.
Do I have to go somewhere?
Yes, it's a buffet.
Well, let me, for the record, were you voting yes or no?
I'm voting no.
Okay.
Go is the key.
Well, but he will go.
Yeah, he'll go.
I can't? Well, well, timeout. You know, I work for the federal government. They tell me if I can go or not.
It's October, right?
It's October, the meeting's on a Saturday.
Is that the one down in Austin?
Yes.
Yes.
It'll be October 3rd.
October 3rd? Well, I plan on being down there for...
Sure, well, your school board duty's the first, though, I guess.
Thank you for your service, John.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, I'll be there.
Okay, very good. Would you like...
Does it conflict with the football game?
No.
Well, I'm going to miss the ballgame the night before.
But you'll be there on Saturday.
Yeah.
I'll be there Saturday.
And it doesn't start until approximately 2:00 PM on Saturday.
What time is it over? I might have to pass that night.
About two hours, max.
We're good.
Lasts about two hours.
Okay.
Carl's not going to be there, so don't worry about it.
Therefore, we still, we, would you like to vote at this time?
All right.
I had...
You had six votes.
Okay. He raised his hand. That vote is unanimous. Thank you very much.
I'm a team player. Does Mr. Matthews want to nominate an alternate?
Next issue. Next, in conjunction with this, we would like to have an alternate in case something unexpected happens.
Would I have an alternate that hasn't been an alternate? I would think would be the best.
Well, I'm only requesting an alternate.
I don't know, experience is important. Not in this, not in this.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd do.
Mr. Matthews?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Fleming as the alternate.
I'll second that.
And I'd like to, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I have a second by Mr. Shore.
Hold on, James, I'd like to nominate...
Any discussion?
Mr.?
No, you said it couldn't already been an alternate, and I've already been it, so I'm disqualified.
Yeah, but I'm already disqualified as well.
I think there's something to be said for experience.
I'm disqualified as well. I'm disqualified as well.
Something to be said for experience in these proceedings, so...
That knocks me out. I think that might put Mr. Shackman in the play. I think that puts...
I haven't confirmed with my doctor that I would be able to attend.
Okay, well, confirmed, but right now, I think Mr. Shackman, if I'm correct.
I'll second Randy.
And...
If that's a nomination, I'll second that.
No, not yet. We have on the floor right now a motion and a second.
But I think we just said that we want to give some other members a chance, and so, since I've already served, I don't think that'd be right.
And when did you serve?
That would be 2009, with me and Lynn Chaffan and I, so...
Well, we are recycling, since then, we have recycled people.
Well, that's fine, but I'd like to give everybody on this board a chance to be an alternate, because...
Are you removing your name?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I want to give Randy Shackman a chance to...
Okay, board members, Mr. Fleming has removed his name. We are therefore back. Do we have a motion for an alternate delegate?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Randy Shackman be our alternate for this upcoming year, if he hasn't already served.
Well, I served last year on the governmental advocacy.
But not as an alternate, right? Not as an alternate delegate.
No.
No, I wasn't the alternate. I was, and I made the trip to Austin and did all the stuff for the advocacy.
Let me restate that, then.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and let Mr. Randy Shackman as the alternate.
Okay, I have a motion. Mr. Shore?
I'll second that.
And a second. You will be attending the TASB Convention in Austin, correct? And this is Saturday afternoon, 2:00 to 4:00 PM.
And you'll only be there if John is not there.
And I will make sure that Mr. Matthews is very healthy.
You have the opportunity to sit in the rear of that facility and just observe so you can see. You'll find it very, very enlightening. Okay, very good. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify. That is, I have, I believe that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Okay, good job, thank you.
We will move on to Agenda Item 3A, which is Comments Regarding Posted Agenda Items. Board members, are there any items you have any comments about on the posted agenda? Hearing none? Seeing none? By my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 7:13 PM.